Hey, thank you Rita. It being seven o'clock and I will call to order the January 4th meeting of the King or Kenmore Planning Commission. I think first on our agenda is public comment. Rita, do we have any hands up for citizen comment?
There are currently no hands, but if we want to give everyone just a second, if you'd like to give public comment, please use the raise hand feature and we can promote you to panelist.
While we're waiting for that, thank you to all of our new members. Welcome. I think you'll find this be an interesting experience. And I think we're going to be pushing you into the deep end of the pool here pretty quickly. So enjoy and please, if you have questions or do feel free to chime in at any point, you'll find this is not a very well sheltered or quiet group. So you do chime in when you feel feel ready.
Yeah, I see no hands raised up this time.
Very well then, we'll call at the end of this.
Sorry, one just went up. So it looks like Stacy V has her hand up. Okay Stacy, I'm promoting you to panelist and once you begin to speak your three minutes will start. Here we go. Okay Stacy, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to welcome the new planning commissioners and make a statement of that I hope that they enjoy this process and investigate a little bit further when things come up from the city staff. Because the residents are counting on them to also include them and their opinions forward as well as the commissioners and the businesses in our community. And thank you for stepping forward.
I see no other hands at this time. Oh wait, sorry. One other hand just went up. Hold on one second. It looks like Janet has her hand raised. I apologize for the dog in the background. I'm gonna go ahead and mute myself and Janet, I will promote you to panelist and once you begin to speak your three minutes will start. One moment. There seems to be a little bit of a delay between promoting to panelist. There we go. Okay Janet, go ahead.
I'm stuck. Can people hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you and we can see you.
Oh, I am checking back into, I've been for the last three months has been the holidays for me. So I'm just getting over all of that with the big family. So I just wanted to catch up and hear what's new and what's happening in current and I also want to thank the people that decided to be part of the planning commission and they got to be. And I'm thrilled that you're there. And I did owe just about everything that Stacy said. Well, everything she said. She kept me a bit informed today. So I caught up a little, but I'm back in. Thank you very much, all of you.
Okay, and if you would again like to give public comment, please use the raise hand feature down below and we can get you promoted to panelist. But as of right now, I see no other hands.
Okay, having no other further citizen comment, we'll call this part of the agenda concluded. Move on to the next portion. This is the consent agenda portion which this meeting has December 7th planning commission meeting minutes. If unless we hear a comment from anybody else, we'll declare this to be approved. Hearing none, we'll conclude this part of the agenda on and move on to the main agenda items for this meeting. I'll ask our staff members, Lori and Debbie to come to the virtual table and bring us through, take us through the first item on the menu.
Right Commissioner Vanderland, there were a couple of items early on the agenda, unusual items that I think you probably want to return to. One was election of officers for the.
Interesting. I was wondering about that because it's not actually on my agenda.
Oh, and discussion of the land acknowledgement, which was raised by a citizen last time. I'm not sure why those two items would not appear, but.
Elections is number three and four is.
Discussion of the land acknowledgement.
And oh yes. Okay. All right then, next item being elections. We'll entertain nominations for chair. Nathan.
I nominate Commissioner Vanderline as Chair of the Commission.
Tracy.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Thompson to be Chair. He has longstanding municipal service, gives him lots of experience in running meetings like this and a good solid grasp of Robert's Rules of Order. And I think he'd be a good leader for us.
Thank you Tracy. Nathan, thank you for the nomination, but I would like to decline the nomination. Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I hear we have one candidate. Do we need to have a vote on this Rita, or can we do this by acclamation?
I'm going to go ahead and let Debbie answer that. I think she was looking into, looking into what the procedure was.
Well, as you only had one nomination, unless there are any dissenters, then I would say that Commissioner Thompson would be then the Chair of the Commission for the next year.
Right. Congratulations Dwight. Debbie, do we pass the gavel to Dwight now or do we have to wait till the next meeting?
No, you would, you would pass it to Commissioner Thompson now and then the next action is voting on a vice chair.
Very well. So done. Dwight, over to you.
Well, thank you very much for your vote of confidence and Mike, again, thank you for your willingness to serve the Commission in a leadership role for these years and it's very much appreciated. So our next order of business would be the election of the Vice Chair. So are there any nominations? Hearing none, I would like to nominate Commissioner Ben Zanieski.
Commissioner Thompson, Nathan, head his hand up.
Oh, I didn't see you there. I'm sorry, I'm, I am, go ahead Nathan.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Vanderline for the position of Vice Chair. He's served admirably this last year and I think there weren't any issues there and I think he could still continue to serve in that capacity.
Thank you very much. Mike, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. I believe I was going to nominate, I still am in fact, Commissioner Ben Zanieski, she has a longstanding experience in the community, has a grasp of the needs of the planning commission and has had a variety of organizational experience which would lead her to be a good Vice Chair. Tracy, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, yes.
Are there any other nominations? I, Debbie, correct me if I don't see anyone else with their hands up.
I see no one else with their hands up. Correct.
If there are no other nominations by members of the Commission, then nominations will be closed. And then we will proceed. Would the candidates like to make a statement, Mike and Tracy?
No, thank you.
Tracy, would you like to make a statement?
Thank you for your nomination and I have been happy to serve Kenmore on the planning commission and would be honored to be a Vice Chair if so chosen.
Are there any other comments by any other commissioners on this topic? I don't see any. Debbie, please let me know, Rita, let me know whoever on staff, if I miss someone, I'm having to use my iPhone tonight. As far as the actual Zoom and my computer's got the agenda on it. So I just, I hope everyone would be slightly patient with me with regard to being able to see hands raised. Or the other thing is just to speak up, say hey there and that will work too. So if there's no further comment, then we'll move to a vote. Hearing no further comment, those in favor of Mike Vander, Vander, sorry. Please indicate by saying I or raise your hand, let's put it that way. Let's raise your hand. Debbie, can you see all the hands? All the people?
I can see them. Dwight, this is Rita.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
If you could raise your hands again though, because I was writing as you were raising.
I see one, two, three, four, five, Christiana, is that a hand raised? I can't tell. Yes, five.
All those in favor of Commissioner Ben Zanieski?
I see two hands raised.
Okay, so it's five to two. Mike, congratulations, you're the Vice Chair.
Yep.
And so let's move on to the next order of business. We did the approval of of I too have an older version of the agenda on my computer. So the, would you please remind us what the next item of business was?
It was discussion of land acknowledgement.
Would you, would the staff please provide us a briefing on what you are asking us to do?
Sure. This is Lori. Good evening.
Hi Lori.
Hi. The planning commission, the question of whether to do a land acknowledgement was raised by a member of the public during public comment a couple of meetings ago. And so the commission, we heard some interest, so we brought it forward as an agenda item. This is something that the city council does. And I will read you the phrase that they say at the beginning of their meetings. The phrase is, "We stand on the traditional land of the first people of Kenmore and honor with gratitude the land itself and the Coast Salish peoples who thrive in this place alive and strong." So that is the land acknowledgement that the city council uses and the question is whether the, the planning commission wishes to do so as well.
Is there any discussion on this item? I see Mariel's hand. Go ahead Mary. May I call you Mariel? Is that okay?
That's okay. My name's a mouthful, so Mariel is just fine. I just want to say first of all, I really appreciate that the community members who brought us forward to do a planning mission. I think that words matter and acknowledgements matter and the original peoples of this territory still are here with us and should not be forgotten. With that said, I do have a question because this is something that in my other life, in my other hat wearing, we've gone through processes of land acknowledgement and the importance of working with people of the communities that we're talking of to make sure that our land acknowledgements are are appropriate and proper. And I'm just curious as to if the land acknowledgement that is used by council, was there a similar process that went through? I guess I just want a better understanding of the context and how it came about. And the fact is perhaps the opportunity of, of just maybe working with the community to make sure that our land acknowledgement is mine to good.
Would staff like to address that?
I don't know the answer to that question. I was not, did not participate in the city council process. I don't know if Debbie has any.
I do know, I do know. I just, I asked the city clerk as to give me the verbiage for what the council says and how they came up with that verbiage. I could do some checking and get back to you on that at the next meeting. That would be helpful.
I just want to make sure that what we do end up using to do, vote on using and stating land acknowledgements. But it's important to get the community, the local community to see us represent.
Thank you very much. Are there any further comments? Or discussion, I should say. Tracy, go ahead.
Yeah, I am in support of incorporating a land acknowledgement into our proceedings. I look forward to hearing the research on how those words were developed. I would also like us to be accountable as a commission to the words and make sure that we are honoring them with our actions and our decisions. I don't know what that mechanism might look like, but I would like them to be more than just words that we say.
Is there any further comment or discussion?
I just want to second what Tracy just said and be accountable in the portion to make sure that the land acknowledgement is not the component.
I hate to say this, but I, on my end, you were slightly broken up. Could you repeat what you said, please?
Sure thing. Sorry about that. I seem to be having technology issues today. Must be the new year. I just wanted to second what Tracy mentioned to make sure that we are accountable, we are stating the land acknowledgement just to make sure that it's not.
If there are no other comments, what I could see forward on this is either putting this on the agenda for further discussion next meeting or we can adopt this now with an understanding that we will have further research and discussion at our next meeting with regard to the appropriateness and the desires of members of the commission. Which would you like to do? Someone can go ahead and speak up.
Yeah, I moved that we ask staff to bring the answer to Mariel's question forward to a next, a future meeting so that we can make a decision based on, on the answer to those questions.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Speak up please. I'm having problems with seeing. Is there a second? Well, quick, thank you very much. Okay, it's been moved in second. Unless there's an objection, I will declare the motion passed. So please, if you have an objection, indicate by saying something like, "I object" and the reason why, please. Hearing no objections, the motion is passed. Staff, when would we be able to put this on the agenda again and have a, the information that's necessary for us to have a more in-depth conversation?
We should be able to do that at the next meeting. I will check and find out the process the council used to come up with the language. And then you can decide if the language that the council has is appropriate or you would like a different process or different language.
Great. If there's no objection, we'll go ahead and do that and put that on the top of our agenda for the next meeting. So the next item, as I scroll through my agenda here, I show that it's the housing element, additional policy questions, housing element memo. Would I, could I please ask the staff to provide the introduction and briefing on, on what you need us to do and what the information that you have provided us?
Sure. So, good evening Chair Thompson. And other members of the planning mission. So tonight, we actually have two business items to tackle. One deals with some additional policy questions related to the housing element and that's where we'll start. And then second, we need to review and confirm some decisions you made last summer related to several commercial zoning, commercial planning topics. So I'll start with the housing element. I gave you a preview of this at your last meeting. But there are a series of questions here that have been raised either by members of the public or the city council or staff. And so I wanted to follow up with you on these questions. These would not be something that would immediately be implemented with the exception perhaps of the last item, which has to do with rounding of housing units when calculations are being done. But mostly, we're just looking for direction to decide whether this is a policy that the commission is interested in and would like us to pursue through conference plan language. Even if it's just an implementation measure, something to look at for the future. So I think I'll just start going through the four and then pause. I can tell you the staff recommendation and then you can decide what you wish to do. So the first. Yeah, sure.
For the, for the benefit of the new members, I believe what you're asking us to do is not to make a decision with regard to the specific question, but the question that you're asking us to do tonight is whether we want further information and to discuss it and put it onto our agenda as an item of interest. Is that correct?
No. Actually, what I'm hoping, I am working right now on writing a draft housing element, which the typical process here is that you would, the planning commission would provide direction to the staff and then we would write the element to reflect that direction. And that certainly will come back to the planning commission in draft for your review to see if you agree with the language, do not agree, want to edit, et cetera. So what I am looking for here tonight is a general sense of whether you want me to incorporate some of these concepts into the housing element. If so, then I would develop language that would come back to you, yes Chair Thompson, at a future meeting for your review and, and deliberation before, it's a long process before we would have a public hearing and there are a number of steps. So I am actually hoping to get your direction this evening. Certainly, if you have questions, I can go away and come back. But I'm not looking for a specific approval of a, of a set of a language, the exact language. What I'm looking for is a direction generally and I'll be bringing language back to you that reflects that direction. Did that help?
Thank you. That helps a lot. Now, on behalf, on behalf of the new members, do any of the new members have questions related to that, the process, not to the element, but to the process? I want to give you all a chance to, to this whole way of developing a comprehensive plan and the elements of the plan is, is can be a little complicated.
Right. Right.
Hearing no questions, then Lori, please follow on.
Okay, I'll do it. So the first policy question, and again, this is not, this is not the final decision. I'm just looking for preliminary direction on whether to draft, to draft language that would further this policy idea. Should establishing a maximum house size be included in future discussions about smaller minimum lot sizes? So in the past, the commission has talked about as a future look at housing, whether minimum lot sizes should be decreased. And so we have a, have direction to include that kind of language in the conference of plan. But a corollary question is, so if you decrease minimum lot sizes, should there also be a policy direction that says if you're going to decrease minimum lot sizes, you should also decrease house sizes. So you'd set a maximum house size. So that's, that's the question, not how big the house should be or, or how many square feet. We're, we're nowhere near that level of detail. It's just a question of whether in the conference of plan, we should consider looking at a maximum house size. At the same time, we're looking at a decreased minimum lot size. And Steph's recommendation is that yes, that scale of development on a small lot could be important.
Last question. Lori, I'm in favor of the staff's recommendation. I have a question though. How would you go about determining what that maximal house size would look like relative to a lot size?
Yeah, I think it would be, you know, it depends on what lot size we're talking about. So it could be looking at, okay, with these setbacks, how big should the house be? Should be it's almost an analysis that we did when we looked at how big an ADU would be. So we would look at the relative size of the house compared with the relative size of the lot. Again, that's a future analysis that I haven't even begun to think about. And, and where this would appear in the conference of plan would be in a policy and probably a related implementation measure that says in the future, the city should consider whether the minimum lot size should be reduced. And at the same time, should consider whether a maximum house size should also be included.
Are there, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. Is this lot size versus house size? Are we looking at that as a percentage of the total size of the lot, like building to lot as a percentage?
We're not there yet. I know this is, this is difficult without the specifics, but, but that it would be one way that you could think about it. You could think about putting a maximum square footage size of a house. You could think about putting a maximum square footage size of a house. If your lot is small, how much, how much building should you do? It gets to the issues of neighborhood compatibility. And and really some concerns we've heard that with smaller lot sizes, if people are building giant houses, then you'd lose the open space, the that yard space that that people are concerned about.
Okay. Derek, did that answer your question?
That did.
Nathan, I believe you had your hand up.
Yeah, Lori, you partly answered my question. I was going to ask kind of what the purpose was behind this or the benefit of this because I know currently there are setbacks and regulations based on zones. But I think you kind of answered that with preservation of open space. I, I, I think, I think that that pretty much answered my question. I'll speak up again if something else comes up, but thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Is there anyone else that would like to comment or ask questions on this item? Tracy, go ahead.
I would like to review maximum house size standards for smaller lots, and I would love to see it tied together with some of the other larger overarching values that we've talked about in the commission and that I know the community is concerned about, like what would that mean for what we're able to do for environmental protections as we develop? How are we able to incorporate that into a value of people oriented places? And what other things might that be tied to? So I am interested in having that discussion, and I'm hoping that it can be a robust one that incorporates some other elements as well.
Thank you, Tracy. Is there any more comments from members of the commission?
This is, I'll just, I just wanted to be able to confirm, Lori, that this is consideration, but not necessarily it's for consideration for including language in the housing element. It does not necessarily mean that we're going to be tied into this, correct?
Correct. So, so if if the commission wants to include this concept in a future discussion, we would put it in the housing element of the conference of plan likely as in what's called an implementation measure. We have a list of things that we're going to do in the future at the end of each chapter. And so this would go onto that list. It would be a future discussion and probably a discussion that wouldn't happen for at least a couple of years because we're in the the middle of doing conference of plan updates. And at the time that this came back to the commission, then we would be doing the kind of analysis that you all have raised questions about, like, would it be a percentage? How, what, what are we thinking of? And at that time, then the commission would make a recommendation on on the sort of the final action. You would, if you, if you include it as an implementation measure at the end of the conference of plan chapter on housing, then there would be an expectation that at some point, the idea would come back that the, that the planning commission is interested in at least discussing the concept.
I think there similarly, I would appreciate a bit more analysis of it and for future discussion. I think you do need to balance the environmental protections of maintaining open space. But I can also see just knowing that in other communities where housing size and these type of conversations have been used in many ways against certain groups, especially if you're thinking about multi-generational families and how perhaps they're thinking of housing and what that would look like if they're developing their lot, for example. And we just want to be able to balance the needs, both environmentally speaking, but also our values and features.
Thank you very much, Mario. All right. Is there any other discussions or comments?
Yes, right. Question or comment. Lori, I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of what I think is, number one, actually, there are two questions or two policy considerations embedded in that. One is the question of whether or not we should consider reducing minimum lot sizes. And second is, if we do, then coming up with some sort of a standard that relates maximum house size to lots.
Right. And and the commission gave direction on the minimum lot size question. So that's been in amendments that you've already looked at. But but the second question of the maximum house size has not been tackled. And I was hoping that if the commission wanted to include that as part of the future discussion, that you could give me direction in that regard or not.
Yep. Thank you. I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of the fact that we still have that first policy decision before we get into the second one. The second question I wanted to ask is, earlier, we talked about developing several zoning classes, high, medium, and low density. And I'm wondering how we incorporate that into this policy. And I think one of the things I would put out there is, I think, as we're putting together these policy statements, we ought to make a distinction clearly about whether or not we're considering this to be applicable to all of those density zones or specific density zones. But I think eventual policy support or decision would vary based upon whether or not it was a comprehensive throughout the city versus in specific zones. So for instance, in this one, are we saying that we would, if we make a policy decision that we would be looking at reducing lot sizes, smaller lot sizes, is that applicable to every one of our our zones or particularly the the new zoning classes, or is it specific to, for instance, the high density, low density, or medium density zones?
Yeah, as the language is drafted, it doesn't specify, which leaves the door open to considering smaller lot sizes in all those different planning categories.
So would it be appropriate to make that decision now, or is that something we take up later as part of the implemented policy?
You can, you can handle it however you want. If you are, are thinking that you would only want to consider smaller lot sizes in one of those broader categories, you could certainly specify that. If it's unclear and you're not certain where that might maybe should be considered, then I would leave it alone and not make that specific statement.
So I'd like to hear what other commissioners feeling on this, but for myself, I would look at for number one, limiting that policy to medium density zone.
I, I might just point out that the medium density zone that we're talking about for the new commissioners is an area that's within one quarter mile of the city's two frequent transit routes. So along one quarter mile along State Route 522. And then it's, the other route is down 1A to drive to Northeast 153rd and then across on 155th and down 84th Avenue Northeast. So the medium density area that is being considered is in that one quarter mile swath of those two transit route areas.
Now, if I understand the direction that you're asking us, this is more of a generalized staff recommendation that you're asking us to approve or provide you. And then Mike's perspective is that that recommended recommendation would be further narrowed down. Am I taking that correctly?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
Are there any other specific narrowing or items that individuals would specifically like to add? Or put boundaries on? Please speak up. Nathan?
One kind of question that popped into my mind when I was reading about this is, say, there is a lot smaller lot or something, and somebody was putting a, a house on it, developing a house, and there was a maximum to try and preserve open space. All right, just something to keep in mind if we go forward with this, but also considering ADUs and how ADUs might still play into that and maybe defeat our purpose of implementing this as well. I don't know if there's policies in place or if if that would be something that we have to discuss going forward. But I could see it happening where we may might establish maximum house size and to keep it small and preserve open space. But then tenants go, kind of go around and put an ADU there and kind of defeat the purpose of us trying to preserve that open space. I'm not saying, you know, one way or another, what we should do, but I'm just, you know, I want to keep that in mind and maybe on the record going forward. If we talk about maximum lot size, what, or I'm sorry, maximum house size, what what we can do to preserve and maintain those kinds of benefits and goals we're trying to achieve with it.
Great. That would be a second spec- specific item to be included from the main motion. Is there any other items that people would specifically like to add or detract from the main staff recommendation? Please just speak up. As you can see, I'm trying to buzz you across the, my I don't see any further. Lori, you know, or Debbie, if you see someone that I can't see, just feel free to speak up.
I do not, I do. I see two now. I see Mike and then Tracy.
Okay, so I'll start with Tracy and then get back to Mike since Mike's got one on the table already. Tracy, go ahead.
Yeah, as long as we're discussing where in the city these smaller lots might be appropriate, I'd like to remind us all that we have talked about our R1 and R4 zones as being ones that are there in part to protect environmentally critical areas. And so we should keep that in mind as we're talking about smaller lot sizes.
Great. That would be item three. Mike?
Man, Tracy. I guess I had a little more mature thinking on my earlier thought. I think these are all, and I'll just focus on my, my consideration, I think is something that I think we didn't need to take a look at, looking at what Lori needs to accomplish here, the staff needs to accomplish in beginning to move forward on some policy writing. I'd be happy if Lori and Debbie took my comment as something that needed to be addressed within the policy as we going forward, but not, don't necessarily need to narrow it down to a single zone at this point. I think, I think there is, and it's probably going back to Nathan's comment, I think there's a lot of intersections here between the thoughts that we have and the, what we want to accomplish that you can't address directly in a policy at this point, but that would be the work for later on. I just want to make sure that in writing those policies, directions right now, Lori, that we, we make room for that consideration. And we don't close that out. We make, make sure that we're going to be able to circle back. And whoever is going to has been to take a look at these things differently. So maybe there's a general statement that says that these policies would take into account whether or not they need, they were appropriate for all of the zoning classes. They would take into account the desire to preserve open space, et cetera, et cetera. But not necessarily let, put a limitation in place right now.
Okay, so Mike has withdrawn his specific suggestion and made it into a more generic request for it to be researched and come back with information with regard to his concerns. I would look for a motion to accept the staff recommendation. And just so you know, what happens is we make a main motion, and then there would be amendments to the motion or like further specifications with regard to issues that like Mike would have just brought up that would either like to be specifically looked at or, in his case, generically looked at. So is there a motion for the acceptance of the staff recommendation as a main motion?
I move to accept.
Is there a second? Go ahead and speak up. I don't see a second. I need a second, folks. Okay, I see, I see a second from Derek. It's been moved in second. Did that the staff recommendation for item one on the medal memo be approved? Is there a further discussion and with, with regard to outlining out any specific requests? I would say that Mr. Vanderween has made a request that, why don't you state your request real simply? Mike?
There's a challenge.
May I?
Go right ahead, Lori.
Thank you. I'm, I'm not sure that you all need to get into every specific here. I've heard a number of things. I've heard the concern about multi-generational families. I've heard a concern about whether it's appropriate in some areas. I've heard a concern about environmental protections, for example, in the R1 and R4 zones. And I think staff is comfortable crafting some draft language to bring back to you that recognizes those concepts as things that should, as Commissioner Vanderland stated, be taken into account when considering this future discussion.
I'm happy with that, Lori. Generally, what I think you're saying, and I think I'm, I'm hearing and agreeing to, is that you would create a set of principles that we would be requiring the future body, whether it was the planning commissioner elsewhere, to take into account in executing these policies.
Right.
That statement could be separate from the policy.
The other, great, thank you very much. The other commissioners that identified specific concerns, does the statement that Lori just made, does that meet your your wishes?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes, yeah.
And I think it was Nathan, is that you? Yes, so so it's been moved in second to accept the staff recommendation with the discussion notes that Lori has outlined. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say so by, indicate so by saying hi. I.
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying no. Hearing none, the motion has been approved. Lori, would you go to an item number two on the memo?
Right. So similarly, to a potential future consideration of these house size, small lot issues, is the consideration of whether duplexes or triplexes should be considered in plats? The plat is another word for subdivision in subdivisions that are specifically designed for them. And the example I gave in the staff memo is that the city currently allows townhomes in single-family zones in plats or subdivisions that are specifically designed for townhouses. And, and so the question has been raised, if someone wanted to subdivide property, not changing the density in terms of lot size, but if they wanted to do a duplex or a triplex in a subdivision rather than single-family residences, should, is that something that the city should consider for the future? And there are kind of two approaches for that. One would be to say you can allow a full subdivision, a complete proposal to have nothing but duplexes. There's an example of that actually in South Kenmore, which is where there are a number of duplexes. The other approach is to say, well, if you are doing a subdivision, maybe one or two of the lots could have a duplex or a triplex on them. The, the advantage is that you're, if you're doing a subdivision, you're sort of creating a community that would have If you're doing a subdivision, you're sort of creating a community that would have. Already have an expectation of the kinds of housing that was in that uh community at the time people were purchasing. Their properties, so again, we're not working out the standards here, we're not picking a number. Et cetera, the question is, is this something that the city should look at for the future, or would the commission prefer that we not look at that?
So to move our procedures along, what we should do is to, is there someone that would like to? Move that we accept the staff recommendation and then we'll discuss. The staff recommendations or any amendments to that, is there a motion?
I need to accept the recommendation.
It's been moved, just a second. Speak up, go ahead, if there's a second. Do I see a hand anywhere or just somebody?
I was looking for a little bit more clarification before seconding. Are are we considering? That duplexes and triplexes should be limited to plats specifically designated for them? Or air, and that's what this question number two is asking on the agenda, but would that then eliminate? Consideration for duplexes? And triplexes to be in single family unit plats?
So um, the the commission has already uh made a recommendation. That duplexes and triplexes should be allowed in an the area I described earlier, within a quarter mile of these transit areas. Uh, to to do, to add a policy or an implementation measure. About this would be an expansion of opportunities for duplexes or triplexes. It would say that uh sort of regardless of uh. And we're not too, where it would be, you know, is it all the R six, is it? In only a certain part of the city, we're not there yet. The question is whether it's worth looking at the concept of allowing. A duplex or triplex to be permitted in a subdivision somewhere in the city. Uh, either all the all the lots in that subdivision or a limited number of lots in that subdivision.
I I would second on that.
It's been moved in second that uh the commission accept the staff recommendation, is there further discussion? Tracy? You're muted, I think.
Oh, yeah, thank you, I clicked and it didn't work. Uh, first, I want to preface this by saying that I have concerns about the plating process, I know that's not what we're discussing at a policy level, but. My concerns, just for the record, are that there's, I think, a perception. That that plating process in particular has led to a lot of um clear cutting. And I find that problematic, and then a lot of neighborhood disturbances when these large lots get cut and then. I I have those concerns that I want on the table. Now, that said, I would prefer to see all plats moving forward personally. Containing a mix of housing types. Um, because if we're hoping to have neighborhoods that integrate a lot of housing types, I feel like we need to start as we intend to go. Right now, we're trying to integrate some of those housing types into our neighborhoods, so to create. Specific pockets where there is only one housing type seems counter to what um we have been trying to achieve. And so I personally would not like to see a whole plat of just one housing type, but a plat that contains a mixture of housing types.
Nathan?
Um, I I agree with some of what Tracy's saying, um, you know, I I don't mind feeling this out a little bit more, but I think it would be important. If we were to get into this discussion in the future, to remind ourselves of the goals we had when we established the quarter mile zone, what we're trying to achieve. How we're trying to take those steps in integrating like Tracy was saying, but also making sure that our uh infrastructure within the city. Is able to meet and keep up with the where we're, how we're trying to uh. Uh, increase this implementation, um, so I, it's just my position that I think if we go forward with this, that we should start off the discussion. By reviewing our notes on what we've already covered, bringing the uh our our new fellow commissioners up to speed and maybe reminding ourselves. Kind of why we reached the position that we have already.
Thank you, Nathan, Mike.
I agree with Nathan's comments, I I'm deeply concerned that if we accepted this. Uh, proposal, we would be undermining the work we've put agreements we've already put in place. The idea that we would have uh integration of more, a slightly more dense middle. Uh, housing solutions within that middle density zone, the quarter mile zone. Uh, doing this and allowing the uh duplexes and triplexes throughout the city would completely undermine that original decision, so I would be opposed.
Further discussion? I'm swiping through my my uh views here. So there's a motion on the floor to accept the staff recommendation. I did not ex, uh, certainly it would be uh prudent for the staff to consider those. Uh, discussion items that have been voiced during this um. Uh, topic right now. But I think we need a, uh, there's a disagreement in the uh planning commission with regard to. Uh, whether or not um this recommendation as written should be adopted, so uh if there is no further discussion. Will the clerk call the roll?
Chair Thompson, I heard a second from Commissioner Wykoff?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure I have that right in my notes. Okay, yep, Commissioner Lutzis.
Um, as I, as I've voiced, um, I I will say yes on this, but I would like to make a public note. That I think we should to start the discussion and not. Uh, commit ourselves to this until after we've discussed the original goals that we've made and how we've uh. In what we've achieved so far.
Commissioner Metapore?
I vote yes, but I also echo what Commissioner Suss made in this conference just moments ago.
Commissioner Vanazinski?
I will vote. I feel like I'm trying to change the motion by qualifying my vote.
Then I might suggest if you are not happy with the motion the way it stands. And you feel as though you need a qualification, I would suggest that you may want to vote no.
Okay, I'm gonna vote no then, no.
Nathan, oh, are you, you've already voted, are you uh thinking a second thought there?
Uh, I I'm thinking that I put too much on this, on my position, I said yes with too much of a caveat on that, and I think um. Through how true, um, what's been said, I I don't think my original position is in line with what we're, the original motion. Um, and so I think I said yes with too much added on for it to be exactly what we're we're voting on. So I think it would be best if I change my position to no.
So uh Nathan has changed his I vote to a no vote. Will the, will the clerk continue to call the roll?
Commissioner Matthews?
I also um back what Tracy um has stated, and my vote is no as well.
Commissioner Vanderland?
No.
Commissioner Wykoff?
I'll stay with yes.
Uh, Chair Thompson?
Chair Thompson votes no. Uh, the the um. The votes are five no's and two i's, so the the main motion fails. Would someone like to um? Or staff, would you like to propose an alternate staff recommendation to be voted on tonight? The alternative is to.
Yeah. But the commission may have one.
Okay, Mike, I saw your hand.
Uh, yes, I still think that it it's in the spirit of our original uh. Uh, agreements and decisions earlier on, that the city looks at how we would go about integrating or expanding. Uh, the middle uh housing solutions uh in other areas throughout the city. Uh, we decided we wanted to provide that as incremental uh basis, and we would exclude it into the. Middle density zone uh for now, with the idea that in the future, we would look at either expanding that, at expanding that zone. So my motion would be that there would be a policy uh direction that in the future, uh, we would look at uh. Whether or not it was appropriate and to what extent would we, and under what conditions would we expand that uh middle density zone?
There's been a motion made, is there a second?
Mike? Wait, I have a question of clarification for Mike, Mike, are you suggesting that? Hey, as we've discussed currently, that the discussion. If we were having it now would be, is there a place for this plat process that would incorporate these duplexes and triplexes in our quarter mile zone? And not outside that, but then in future, if we did expand that quarter mile zone, the discussion might then be like. Does that plat process also go along with that, or where does it extend and where is it, where does it end, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, almost, I I wouldn't go so far to even mention uh the plat process, I think that would be part of the policy. Uh, determination and discussion later. What I'm looking for and and expecting or with anticipating from our earlier discussion is that we would look. At the appropriateness and the method by which we might include uh more middle housing uh within the city. Uh, but the timing of that, the method of that is yet to be determined. I I do think uh looking at plating could be a good option, but I think there's a lot of work and discussion that needs to go into. Consideration before you'd actually make that decision, so I'm not ready to include that in a motion by itself.
Dwight, Lori, hand up.
Lori, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I'm wondering, uh, when we were working at um, looking at the missing middle conference of plan amendments. There was one that addressed sort of this incremental approach, and I wonder if we might put, for example. Um, looking at a variety of techniques, including uh the plating process, and then whatever else we come up with. Would the commission be comfortable with that?
Mike, I believe you are the motion maker, so is that uh acceptable to be added to your main motion?
Uh. Again, I don't, I I like the idea, and I am proposing an idea that we would look in the future. At various different options and various different techniques, I just don't want to specifically call out any specific one right now. So I think my answer is sort of yes, Lori. Uh, you you're right, i- i- and that was specifically what we said in our original uh uh middle housing. And I, basically what I'm looking here is a policy direction to to do that. To look at uh, look at additional options and expansion of uh middle housing uh within that. Middle density zone.
Right, but I I think what I hear you saying is that in your, from your perspective, that you do not specifically want to call out the plating process.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't want to exclude it, but I don't want to call that one out or any other, I don't want to presuppose that is a a direction.
Case, go ahead, Tracy.
That that um raises a question for me for staff, maybe this is for you, Lori, is that. Uh, staff has called out the plating process specifically, so I am wondering if you would like to tell us. A little bit more about why that was the recommendation.
Sure, so the idea was, a- as we've discussed many times. That this approach to missing middle housing was an incremental approach. And there is this broad general policy that talks about how it is an incremental approach and different techniques should be looked at. This is one technique that staff felt would be uh particularly easy to, it's kind of a low-hanging fruit thing. Uh, that uh staff thought could be an implementation measure to look at this. Uh, consideration, because if you're doing a plat typically, um, it, you know, it. There's no specificity here, but you could say for subdivisions of five lots or more, you know, two shall be. A duplex or a triplex, uh, and it would create a neighborhood of mixed housing types. Um, in a way that wouldn't be putting this mixed housing type into a neighborhood that was already established. So that's why we called this one out uh specifically, and it had been uh raised to us. Um, I can't remember who raised this, but it was one that we were asked to bring back.
Yeah, you're you're right, Lori, I I believe I was the one who brought this up, that plating is an option, and I think it's a good one. I I just don't think that it ought to be specifically called out uh by itself, because I think there can easily be others.
So, Mike, would you restate your main motion? And then I would like uh Lori to make sure that she understands what the main motion is.
I think there is a number of other hands up, Dwight, do you want me to do that and then go to them or?
Yes, would you, just so that we're focused on what the main motion is, and then there's a lot of legislative intent that's being. Uh, banded across, and I can help deal with that, but I want to get back and make sure. Everybody understands what the main motion is.
Okay, I will make this as simple as I can, uh. Using some of the language in number two already, I would say the commission would consider policies that would allow future. Uh, consideration of duplexes and triplexes uh. In. In medium-density zone classifications uh. And to look at policies and procedures for expanding, what would be, uh, now you've got me into wordsmithing. I I want to say something, I want to say something there, Lori, after about uh. Part of that consideration is going to be looking at the appropriateness and timeliness of expanding that uh. Middle density zone.
Yeah, and I might just interject here, I I'm not looking for specific words, I'm not looking for. A motion that you're going to vote on, and then those exact words are going to appear in the conference of plan, I mean, my job as a staff person is try to take your intent. And write something that hopefully reflects what you want, so I hope you won't get bogged down in the idea that you're. You know, as Commissioner Vanderland is saying, you're wordsmithing something right now, I get the concept. Um, and if the commission is comfortable with the concept, then I'll bring something back to you that reflects that.
I think that's uh well-stated, uh, we just need to have an agreement at the commission level, what the concept. It's not that we're voting on the final thing or any, it's just, it's giving direction to the staff. Of where we're going to be going, so there were other hands up. I, if I'm gonna look on my screen, uh, Nathan.
I was, I was, I was going to ask Lori a clarifying question, um, as it stands right now in our. Recommendations or the direction the commission is heading with establishing a quarter mile um zone. I guess um around transit centers, is there anything that would prevent um? Kind of what we're discussing right now in in number two from being developed within that quarter mile zone already? Okay, so I I mean, I think. How it stands and uh what Commissioner Vanaline has proposed, I I think. We we can still have this while still meeting um the original kind of goals and direction that the commission. we, we can still have this while still meeting, um, the original kind of goals and direction that the commission has established so far.
So any further discussion?
Uh, this is Tracy. I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm, I feel unclear about how, um, the updated revised motion is different from what we already have directed.
Lori, would you like to?
Uh, yeah, it, it, the, I don't have the language right in front of me, but we do have a policy about how considering expansion of the medium, uh, of missing middle housing in the medium density area is, uh, is to be considered. And what I heard from Commissioner Vanderlin is he doesn't want to call out specific techniques. Um, but he does certainly want to support future consideration of, uh, them in the area already identified and in the future area. So it, I, I'm not sure it would look much different than what you already, uh, have called out. Um, it, it's, it gets fundamentally down to the question of whether you want to specify this type of approach, plating or not. That's, that's as simple a question as I can make it. So Commissioner Vanderlin doesn't want to consider plating. If others think we should in the future consider plating as a technique for expansion of missing middle housing, then that would be a direction. Those are the two directions.
Uh, objection to, uh, your summary there, Lori. The current language says, uh, would allow a limited number of duplexes or triplexes in all new plaques. So that would be and outside of, uh, the, uh, middle density zone. It would include my reading of this throughout the city. And that's part of what I'm opposed to.
Right. I, I understand.
I think your, your first sentence, changing this next to the last word to will or should, uh, it would, would probably cover it for me very nicely to basically implement what we've already said is, uh, related to future of middle, oh, considering middle density.
Which, Lori, which sentence do you believe that, uh, for my clarification that Mike is, uh, referring to?
I am, Mike, are you looking at the, Commissioner Vanderlin, are you looking at the language in the missing middle housing draft?
Yes.
Okay.
First, your first sentence that you stated, uh, straight out of that missing middle housing, language that we already approved, basically says what, what we're talking about here. What I would say, just change the last word that's, uh, basically thou shalt do it.
Okay. All right. So it's, it sounds like the, what Commissioner Vanderlin is saying is don't change the perspective, which is that for the future, we're going to look at different things. Um, and I, and I don't have it right in front of me, so I can't speak to it. If you want to give me a minute, I can find it and then we'll, we'll all be talking about the same thing. But what I am hearing is that Commissioner Vanderlin does not want to get more specific about the plating process in that policy. A- am I missing that?
No, I don't think you are, Lori.
Okay. All right. So
But what, what we're saying here is not the same thing as what number two here says.
Well, number two would not be the language that went into the conference plan.
Right.
So where does that leave us, Lori?
I don't know where you are. I'm sorry to be so dense about this, but it seems to me it's the basic question is leave the language as written that you've previously approved that talked about an incremental approach to missing middle housing or add in a new phrase that specifically calls out plating as a future consideration for expansion of missing middle housing.
Thank you, Lori. That helps a lot. When, when you were saying earlier, keep the language, I heard that as saying, keep the language in number two.
Oh, I see. Yeah. No.
No, keep the language.
Number two is not.
Already approved in the missing middle. And that's, that's the policy direction that replaces number two.
I just want to say thank you, Lori, for clarifying that because I was a bit muddled along the way, so.
You bet. I think we've got the, I think we have the answer.
Well, we know the two approaches. I don't know that we have the answer yet because I'm not sure the commission all agrees on the topic.
Correct. So now I think that we've outlined it. There's either leaving it the way it is in direction to the staff or adding the item on number two as an additional, additional direction. So is there still, is there a motion to add number two as an additional direction?
No, no.
Development?
No, Dwight. We've already voted no on number two.
On that.
Okay. So we're done. Okay. So then, so we're done. Okay. We're going to move to number three.
Okay. Hold on just a second. All right. Number three. Um, this was one that was raised by a member of the public. Uh, should consideration be given to allowing detached ADUs to be separated in ownership from the main residence? And I think you all saw that letter. Uh, and there, the, the reasons behind it, the person was interested in allowing, uh, a person to basically, um, make it an ADU a condominium so that they would own the unit and then there would be shared, uh, common spaces and that kind of thing. Uh, and the reason for that was to provide a home ownership opportunity for a smaller, uh, unit. Um, staff, staff's recommendation is that I don't know that we have a, uh, could, a serious concern about this approach. If the commission is interested in pursuing the question, uh, there would be several things that, that, you know, that we've already identified that could be issues. So if, uh, if the commission wanted to, for the future, uh, add language to say, look at this idea, then we would hope, as you've done with these other things, to put in some caveats about, um, potential issues.
Comments from the commissioners before we either do or do not do something? I'll go ahead, Derek.
Um, I, I think I have the same questions about implementation and how would this, uh, be managed? Um, and to see, I don't know, and I don't, I'm new to this, so I don't know if this is our place or not, but to, I would want to know there's some sort of a formal, um, policy in place for these kinds of things. That this seems like new ground to tread on. I do like the concept of smaller homeownership. I think that's, um, that's bold. That's something new. That's great. But yeah, my concerns are how to implement that, um, with things like utilities and easements and, and so forth. To make sure that, that there is a plan.
Uh, Nathan?
I was going to say, my first reading of it, it almost sounded like a one unit short class subdivision with extra steps. And so I almost, it almost felt like a loophole and kind of achieving some things that we have discussed before. Uh, we created ADUs with a purpose, uh, a couple of years ago, uh, you know, increasing the opportunity for multi-generational living together, attached and detached. And I think there are methods outside of just an ADU to achieve the same purposes. But I think going through ADUs and shifting ADUs, the, the goals that we had already established kind of go around and it, it doesn't feel quite right. I think there's methods in place where they can still achieve this same outcome and we can look at those, whether that is, you know, I don't know, maybe a hypothetical one unit short class subdivision. I'm not going to get in the weeds on that, but that's what it sounds like it's becoming more of as opposed to just an ADU. And then I think you're starting to muddle the two concepts together instead of having an ADU serving as an ADU for ADU purposes and then, uh, another dwelling. Then it becomes, you know, instead of an ADU, an SDU, a separate dwelling unit. So I, I just, I, I'm not quite in favor of this because I, I don't think this is the route to go about achieving this goal. I think ADUs serve a purpose in the capacity that they're already in. Um, and that's, that's just my position.
Tracy, go ahead.
Yeah, as a, a policy question, I'm, I'm interested in pursuing it further. I would like more information, just someone. So I, I would like to, um, learn more about how this concept is applied in other jurisdictions. I'd like to find out how it, um, fits into current Washington state RCW. Um, I would like to know more about, um, yeah, like what is municipal jurisdiction and what is simply a matter of state law and, and banking and financing? Like, I feel like there are lots of outstanding questions here that I would like to delve into before I took a, a policy position on it.
Now, my understanding is, uh, the current staff recommendation is not for us to take a, um, specific policy direction, but to essentially ask staff to do, provide us more research. And is that how I read this, Lori?
That's, that's what I would like then. I'd like more information. Um, so, uh, uh, again, we're not trying to craft a, uh, change to the rules. What we're trying to do is determine whether there's enough interest in the concept to put in a phrase about, in the future, look at this approach. I mean, that's basically what it would say. Uh, if, if the commission is like, whoa, this raises way too many red flags and it's too complicated and it defeats the purpose of our ADU rules, then we shouldn't put that kind of a implementation measure in the conference of plan. On the other hand, if the, if the commission feels like, well, it's an interesting idea, might be workable. What are the benefits? What are the pros? How would it fit into the current scheme of things? Then we could put it in as something to look at for the future.
Another, any fur, go ahead. Any further discussion, Derek?
Yeah, I just had another afterthought too. Uh, having the land ownership for an ADU separate from the building ownership could potentially turn any single home property into a single unit mobile home park, couldn't it? Just a thought.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I'm not sure I'm following. If, um, and I, I haven't researched this at all, but if, if the building were sold, I see what you're saying. What you're saying is it, the way a mobile home park works is that a person purchases the dwelling and then they rent the pad. In this case, the question would be, would that be the, um, structure? Or would in fact the person be more like a townhome where the person owns the building and the land underneath it? It, it raises another question on how it would work.
I, I would just be concerned about loopholes that would be opened up with this possibility.
Okay. I think we've had, anyone else want to have any discussion? Uh, Mike?
Yeah, and there was a few other people had their hand up as well, but I'll just jump in and say, I, I'm uncomfortable about this for all the same reasons folks have mentioned here. The idea of converting in a, a dwelling that was established as an ADU and converting that to a condo, uh, I, I, that just seems me to be fraught with all sorts of potential unintended consequences. And, uh, I'm not necessarily eager to take this on, but not, wouldn't object to it, but there's just so much study that needs to happen into this before you go very long. I, I don't see this as something that would be high priority, uh, in our land use anyway. So, that's all I can say. I just, it doesn't seem to me like the sort of thing we want to spend a lot of time on or if we would, when we would have to spend a lot of time on it. So unless there was some compelling reason, uh, particularly a social policy reason, uh, for doing so, I, I wouldn't see.
Are there any other hands raised for comments at this point?
Wait, Marielle is, her hand raised and I, I did, but Marielle, I will go second. You go first.
Okay, please.
Uh, it, thank you. Yeah. And I have, I think, a number of the same concerns have been expressed. I'm, I'm concerned about unintended consequences. But I think it's not high on the priority list, but it might be worth future consideration. I ha, I would have more concern if this is a private individual who's considering to do this than selling as a condominium, let's say, for example, compared to a community land trust where it would be a different setup. And so, um, yeah, I think it's intriguing, but just, just have a lot of, a lot of concern at the same time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that has their hands raised? Uh, Tracy?
Yeah, me. Yeah, I, I'm, I, um, I guess first want to bring to the table the fact that condominium ownership is sometimes an entry level into building equity and ownership for, for people and which is a fraught issue in this region. Um, so it could provide people, um, an entry into, to building that kind of equity in their families. Um, I know. Uh, so from that perspective, I feel like it, it could be a net positive for us. Um, so I don't want to disregard it completely. I'm not really sure what these concerns are about what loopholes might be taken advantage of or what concerns there are. I, I'm, I would love to delve into them, but when things are brought up like that, it makes me feel like, um, it feels like a, a lot of unknown fear and I don't, I, I want to know what's under that and, and what's, what's, what's there? Like what, what's real and what's not and what we could address and what we couldn't. So I, I feel overall like it's an intriguing idea and I'd love to learn more about it.
And I think, if I could just express a little bit of my concern, I, I think of almost like the rent to own scams that exist that, you know, how, you know, how could this be, this is a loophole to basically scam folks that are most vulnerable trying to enter the market and build their own, their own equity. So I think not having a good panel on this makes me more apprehensive, which is why I think there should be a bit more consideration, research into it. It is intriguing because you are totally correct that condominiums are, are, are oftentimes that first step for folks to build on, you know, their own equity. But I think it's, as I say, the devil's in the details. We just want to make sure this is part of our back, of, of how we want to go about to increase housing and entry level housing for individuals and families that do this the right way.
Uh, Nathan?
Uh, just to kind of go back to what I was saying earlier, maybe rephrase it a different way. I, I, how I read this and how it comes across, it's almost like it's reinventing the wheel. We have opportunities and methods out there to, to do what, to achieve what, what's being stated. Um, but I, it's not through ADUs and this would now make ADUs a path to do that as well. So I don't know if that's the best route to achieve this same goal, considering that there are other alternatives or better routes out there that we've already, that we already have policy on. I, you know, I, I, I think that might be more appropriate instead of spending so much time kind of replicating a lot of this structure that's already there that we could maybe tweak to make this work and building it up from scratch. So I don't know if this is the best route, um, and using ADUs for this method when this can still be achieved and say, do smaller houses on smaller lots. We've, we've talked about that already in some of our other conversations. Um, but we already have, you know, policy and ideas and foundational structure there to be able to, to kind of tweak and work on to make this, um, better and safer, I think, for both parties. So I don't, I don't know if ADUs is the best route to achieve this goal when there's already options out there that might be better suited for creating the same exact outcome.
So I see that, uh, there's been a lot of discussion and what I would, uh, to move the agenda along is to ask if there is anyone who wants to make a motion, uh, to to uh recommend the staff, the staff recommend, I mean uh adopt the staff recommendation uh by the planning commission. Is there a motion? If not, we're going to move on. I don't see any hands or otherwise. So for the lack of a motion, we're going to move on to number four.
Yes, for my clarification, I'm understanding that the commission does not wish to pursue this topic through the housing element.
I would take it that way.
Okay.
Because, and and particularly because there wasn't even a motion to make a um uh a toned down version or anything. So at this point, we, we're going to leave it the way it is and
Okay.
Your interpretation is fair.
Okay. All right. So the last uh policy question, I hope this is an easier one. Um, I know you guys have been working hard on these to think through these issues, but this last one has to do with rounding. A mathematical question. Um, when the city is determining how many um dwelling units are possible uh in the zoning code. There are different ways of doing rounding and sometimes it's point five. And if so, if you're above point five, when you do your calculation, you get the full unit. If you're below point five, you don't get the unit and you go to the lower number of units and it's done differently for different uh uh conditions. Staff is recommending that we make it all the same done, have it done all the same way, simplify it. So there's not uh, for example, for short plot, plots of four lots or less, you do it this way and for plots of five lots or more, you do it this way. Let's just always do it the same way. And if, if uh the planning commission is interested in a way to increase the amount of housing in the community. A simple method would be to just say if you're over the whole number, you get an extra unit. Um, I have also heard from uh from folks, in fact, you received a comment letter from a citizen, a a resident who said, no, you should put the rounding at point five. And in fact, uh Development Services has said, why don't you just leave it at point five? So if it's at three point five, you get four units. And if it's three point four five, you get three units. So that certainly is another approach. We have taken the more um liberal approach to say if you get three point oh one, you get four units. So uh it's a question of whether uh you want to look at this rounding issue. It could be done two ways. It could be if, if you are really interested in it, it would be a a quick uh zoning code fix that we would bring to you along with Conference of Plan language. If you want to do more study, which is totally understandable and you want to take that approach, then we would consider it in the same vein as these other uh things that you have expressed interest in for the future.
Comments from the commission? Mike?
I'm uh concerned about uh changing the rounding in the way it's described here, uh that it would undermine the existing zoning. It is R six and R six, it's up, but sometimes it's in R seven, but maybe an R eight, or maybe it's an R four. I I think we're creating more confusion than than we would solve. If what we're trying to do is to increase the a available amount of developable property within the city. I think what we've already looked at in terms of looking at minimum lot sizes and uh design requirements around that is probably the the more sane way to approach this, so. I wouldn't assess a Sarah. So I'm interested perhaps in seeing more on this, but I certainly wouldn't approve the, or suggest a ch- a change at this point.
More, more comments from commissioners? Hearing no further comment. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question for staff, maybe Laurie. Can the, the last sentence in that recommendation, it says minimum lot size requirements would still control.
Right.
But additional housing units could be created, which would still control. Can you fill that in for me? Control?
Yeah, so there are two things that um are looked at when somebody is getting ready to uh subdivide property. One is density, which is where this rounding question comes in. And the other is lot size. So for example, if you rounded up and you could technically get four units by density, if you didn't have the right amount of property to meet the minimum lot size, you couldn't do it. So there, there are sort of these two factors. So when I say that minimum lot size would control, you would never um end up except in zones that allow this. And I shouldn't even go there, but there are certain places where you can do smaller lots on steep slopes and near wetlands, et cetera. But typically, you just can't do a lot smaller than a certain size, regardless of the density calculation. So you wouldn't see smaller lots as a result. So you'd have to have enough property with your rounding to still meet the smaller lots. They're, they're not in tune, which is surprising.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you so much.
So I, a point of information then, uh the, the whole concept of exceptional use permits has nothing to do with this. And this would not open the door to new machinations on how exceptional use permits would be approved. Is that correct?
Mean like a variance?
Yeah.
Wouldn't, it wouldn't change the way you would approach a variance, no.
Okay, just want to make sure. Is there any further comments? Um, is, if there's not a motion, then I will uh ask. Then we will move on, on the agenda.
I, I guess I have another comment. It it does seem messy to me. And it seems like it does create some weird things. I guess I'm, I'm interested in what, why are wh- what's the under, we don't have to go into all of it and, you know, you don't need to exhaust the answer to this question. But I guess I am interested in why were these standards created? Like, what was the goal? Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. I I'm just being honest. It it's been in place, I think, for a long time. I don't know whether it's a holdover from King County uh upon incorporation or not.
Any further discussion? Oh, Nathan?
I don't know how the commission feels about um maybe not adopting this uh number four as stated, but maybe looking at in the future, somewhere down the road more thoroughly looking at improving um kind of this concept and and approving how units are rounded, but maybe not exactly to what's stated under number four. Maybe somehow clarifying or streamlining it. I think that's a, that that would be something important to do. Um, but maybe not tying us down to exactly what um number four says and everything underneath, exactly.
So what you're suggesting is that the uh recommendation to staff is to look at the issue of simplification, but not for the purposes of the um how we say that here? Uh, policy direction with regard to the uh more or less housing units.
I think anyone can agree that streamlining and efficiency, increasing efficiency is, is a good thing. I don't think that ever hurts. But I I don't know about my, my colleagues' thoughts on this as well. I didn't hear um, you know, a strong indication that they wanted a motion pass, passed through immediately. And so I'm just wondering if this might be a better alternative just to look at it more holistically and find the best approach. Rather than just being tied to some of the, the things and, and ratios and whatnot that are listed under number four as they currently stand.
Derek?
Yeah, I, I think I, I also agree with kind of what Nathan's saying here that I'm, I definitely agree with streamlining. Um, but I don't, don't feel I know enough about why these numbers came to be and what a vote on that could impact. Um, so I, I don't know what I'm undermining if I were to vote on giving direction at this level.
Well, I would think, I would think that if the motion is suggested by Nathan to look at streamlining and doing a little more research on what can be done to improve the process would not um indicate necessarily any uh major planning implications is, I think, what, where Nathan's going on this. Am I correct, Nathan? Is there any further?
Yeah, Laurie has. Uh, yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I think what I'm hearing from the commission is that rather than put something in the housing element, w- w- the city is always maintaining a list of uh potentially problematic code sections that we look at periodically in, in packages of miscellaneous code amendments, or we add to a list of potential work program items. So there are other places that this uh streamlining concept should go. But I think what I'm hearing is that it shouldn't go into the housing element.
I, I think you got that, Laurie. I think that's perfect. That's, this might be something to cover later on, but I don't think this is something that we need to fit in right now.
Excuse me. I'm, I'm seeing, I think I see at least forehead nods, so.
Uh, yeah. So let's, let's uh indicate that as more of a le- legislative intent. And um, and that we are not going to adopt a staff recommendation other than providing uh legislative intent to the staff, what we believe should be done as a next step. Okay, so next item on the agenda.
Right.
What is?
So the next item on the agenda is uh the land use element. And this really is not this opportunity was more uh provided because there's been a change to the planning commission. And last summer, the planning commission made a number of uh policy recommendations that we are now writing policy language for. So this was just an opportunity to um let the commission uh revisit these topics if anyone wanted to do so. So I don't think we need to um go back through these. Uh, the background material was provided. You'll have a chance to uh approve or disapprove when the actual language comes forward for you. Um, but we just wanted to give you an opportunity to ask questions or if there were a sudden need to change direction, we should know that before we get too much farther.
Is there any questions from any of the commissioners?
So Laurie, if I have said something in the past, you don't need to hear it again. Is that what you're saying?
Any further comments or questions from commissioners?
I think I might, but I need to scroll through the agenda for just one second. I mean, the, the.
Maybe I had a comment uh while Tracy's looking. I was actually a little surprised at the fourth bullet. Uh, my recollection of our discussion, uh which was extensive on uh small uh retail enterprises or allowing commercial enterprises uh within uh low density zones in particular, what we used to call single family, was pretty negative. Um, so I was a little surprised to see this come back. I think we got very clearly that similar response out of our survey responses uh from the citizenry, so. I, I was, I was actually surprised to see this come back up again.
I, I think the way it was coming up was that it was to be considered for the future. It certainly wasn't a a, in a policy. It was a, a future implementation measure to consider those opportunities. I, I can go back and review the July twenty meeting information, but I think that was sort of the general perspective. It, it wasn't a strong statement of support. No, definitely not. But that there was some uh interest on the commission in having this future discussion about this as an approach.
Others may have a.
Go ahead.
That was mine.
Mary, go ahead.
Thank you. I do have one question, and and this is in connection more to attachment to you, but Kenmore downtown county way growth center analysis, where there is um there's comments there with regards to planning for social equity within this process. And I know that the city was recruiting for an equity cabinet. And so I think I wanted a bit clarification of how we as a group uh would be potentially working with that other body and and equity considerations for um this work.
At this point, uh the approach that we're taking since the um task force has not been set up is that we have been sending uh drafts uh to the um the person who's heading up that effort in the city so that they have an opportunity to review the, the policy language that's being drafted and give their input and perspectives. Um, the timing has not been ideal because we're kind of moving ahead at a time when we don't have this, this entity completely set up, but we have been trying to coordinate with the uh, the per, again, the staff person heading it up and the consultant who's helping with the project.
Did that answer your question? Your concern?
Um, it did answer my question. Um, I do think that I, I would like to see how we could strengthen this component in the work. Um, I don't think it's fair to ask one or two people to kind of be sole um, like as providers of equity. Um, I think that is something that we as a planning commission, also going back to um values as a spouse. You know, how are we going to um how are we going to have that part of our thinking and our planning? Um, so I think I just want to be able to make note of that. I think if, if we can find a way to at least strengthen or support the work that's being done by this individual and the consultant, um, I would think so.
Okay, so.
I found, wait, I found my concern. So it, it's, and it's in the Kenmore, it's an attachment to Kenmore downtown county way growth center analysis. So is that something that I should not raise right now since it's sort of tangential to the, the four bullet points above in the memo?
So, so that countywide growth center document has already been submitted to the county from the city and then the county approved
Okay.
for center nomination.
All right.
Okay, so back to Mary's perspective. Are, are you, do we need to do you feel that something further than the exploration of what we're looking at tonight needs to, you want to make a comment related? Or further action or something?
No, I, I don't think it's something for further action today, but I think it's for further exploration. Again, to see how a newly borned this process, we can assure that um equity is this part of, of and basically the foundation of what we're getting, um, you know, oftentimes uh for many marginalized communities when it comes to um planning process and development of, that is a health and element or or whatever components they are there. Their voices are not necessarily heard. And I know that that's not the intent of this body and I think whatever we can do to strengthen it is uh, is who that we should, should start there.
Any further comments? Okay, hearing none. Is there any uh business, I believe that's the. I believe that's the end of our agenda from the staff. Is that correct? Staff?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, you have no more items for us, Greg. Okay, so is there any things for the good of the order from members? So hearing none, I, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Without objection, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you for coming and thank you for all the thoughtful, uh, comments and all the hard work that you folks did tonight. And I believe the staff has had their last words, so we are done for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.